I'd like to call this meeting to order. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Elick.
Here.
Ms. Karstarthen, here. Mr. Bax.
Here.
Mr. Brubaker.
Here.
And Mr. Gebhardt.
Here. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. And welcome to the October 2nd, 2019 Liria School Board Meeting. I'd like to introduce our group up here. To my right is Board Member Kevin Brubaker. To his right is Board Member Jim Bax. I am Greg Elick. To my left is Board Member and Vice President Annie Karstarthen. To her left is our Senior Board Member Mike Gebhardt. To his left is our Superintendent Anne Slash. And to her left is our Award Winning Treasurer, Joy Kluckinger.
I can't get on those awards.
Award winning. Better believe it. Okay, moving along today, we have two very special presentations. Amy, would you like to start us rolling here, please?
Thank you very much.
No. Try that.
All right. Can you hear it?
No.
Okay, well.
Maybe it's off. Maybe it was on.
It's possible. Just because I touched something doesn't mean I'm not.
I think he had it turned on.
I've demonstrated that many times. All right, I'm just gonna start. You good with that, Brian? Okay, all right. First presentation, I'm really excited to invite Mitzi Wilson, one of our teachers at Aleria High School, and a couple of students from Aleria High School here to present the board with the super senior issue. For the last several years, the Communications Office and The Herald have been working together to collaborate with The Herald being published in Pioneer Press. But also, we started a super senior issue, which is delivered to graduates and their families at graduation. I'm gonna let Mitzi talk to you about what that entails, but it's a huge undertaking. The students and the teacher organize and do everything for it. We publish it through The Chronicle Telegram, and it's such a professional publication. We're just really proud for you to see it.
Oh, great.
And then separately, they're gonna talk to you a little bit about a new project that they started last year, the freshman orientation issue, which is funded by the endowed board, and it was a huge success. So, we welcome Mitzi Wilson, and Parker Scudd, and Celeste Kaplan, editors of The Herald.
Great, welcome.
Good.
I'm just resting. Okay. Lean over. Is it working? Okay. Hi, I'm Mitzi Wilson. Sorry for the awkward. If I sit down, I'm afraid I might not get back up.
I'm not so sure it's working anyways, so.
You could probably stand up straight now.
Yeah, you stand up. We can hear you.
All right. I have been the advisor to The Herald since I started, I think this is my 13th or 14th year, I sort of forgot. And, 'cause I'm having so much fun. And, so I have two wonderful, you guys are juniors now, right? Yeah. Okay. And they've been with me since freshman year, and they've been the editors of The Herald since freshman year. They've just done a wonderful job. And, they've taken over doing not only the super senior, but they came up with the idea of doing the freshman orientation issue, and made it happen from beginning to end. We don't have any copies of the freshman orientation issues because we gave them all out. We actually didn't have enough. They went out to all of the freshmen who came to orientation, and then half of the parents got them that came to orientation as well. So, I'd like to introduce you to Parker and Celeste.
Welcome, ladies.
Do you guys wanna say a few words?
Well, I'll pass out that part of the super senior.
Thank you. Now, this is super senior. This has anything to do like with senior citizens?
No.
Okay. This is for all lines, seniors in high school.
I thought Mike was getting an award tonight.
Okay.
Oh, no, no, no.
Well, we do have a senior board member here, so.
I might say the word.
Okay.
Good, we can pick on you.
So, the teachers now.
Wow, this is really nice.
You wanna tell them how the process goes? Yeah, so, all of our teachers have the opportunity to nominate students who they think are really true pioneers, and who have just really contributed a lot to high school. And, then we collect all the nominations, and we pick the, is it top nine?
We decided, this year we will list nine, because we wanted to put space, dedicate space to other things, other future opportunities. But it's anywhere between nine and 12.
The students with the most nominations are then put in the issue, and we interview them, and get quotes from teachers and counselors, and then that becomes articles that you see, and those are passed out at graduation for our parents.
Oh, wow. This is really nice quality.
This is neat.
Isn't it beautiful?
Absolutely.
And we have a senior who designs the cover as well, so we try to get one of the art teachers to nominate, or somebody will just kind of volunteer to design the cover, because we want to highlight as many people as possible, you know, and highlight their special guest.
And then we also put all of the, it's on pages 10 and 11, all the Spolastic E. recipients and all of the National Honor Society. And, I think it's also in here, we have, we pride to get everyone else's plans post-graduation, and then all of the prom photos are in here, so just really all of the senior class, big events.
Very nice.
A few years ago, one of the parents of the super seniors, it was just so sweet, she was in tears that her son made it, and she got extra copies, she requested extra copies to pass out at his graduation party. So, it was just so nice, you know, that people are so touched by this.
That was probably me.
So, as a freshman, you know, it's kinda like nerve-wracking coming into high school, and people, my freshmen reacted more to the other older classmen, I mean, more than like teachers and stuff. So, we decided to put together a packet for them on orientation, and had like the map and we had advice for them. We wrote letters to them, just for like advice and stuff, and that was really cool. We put the clubs in there, and that really helped the freshmen get used to the high school, and excited to get involved and stuff.
And my freshmen have won class of freshman honors. They especially liked the feature article that was dedicated to what kind of swag you can wear at graduation. That is very important to know what to aim for.
Now, I noticed there's advertisement in here. How did you go about getting ads?
We didn't.
You didn't?
The Chronicle did.
The Chronicle did for you, okay.
So, they did that part, and we just submit the content.
Okay.
Great, that's actually a really cool part of the partnership, is when we started this years ago, in having The Chronicle publish it, they were, they agreed to sell ads to offset the printing costs.
Oh, okay. So, there's no printing cost at all?
Well, there's a small amount that the Communications Office covers, but most of it is covered by advertising.
Oh, wow. That's outstanding.
Very good. Great job, ladies.
Very good.
Great, Super, thanks for sharing that with us. That's exciting.
Great job. Great job.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Okay. And then Amy, do we have another item we're gonna go over tonight?
Yes.
Safety.
This is nice.
That is nice. That's, great job.
It was nice to get the graduation. My wife.
I kept the card. Thank you. That was pointing. I think he had them.
Done good.
Ah-huh. Oh, good.
I just wanted to introduce the board to the new protocol that we rolled out at the safety summit this year. And this is a district-wide terminology in critical incidents. It's a system that's well-established and used in districts across the nation, but also in businesses and in college campuses. The founders of this terminology and protocol is the I Love You Guys Foundation. And this, what you're seeing here, is what we refer to as the SRP, the Standard Response Protocol. It is an all-hazards approach to any critical incident. What's really great about this, and why this was so easy to roll out for us at the safety summit and with this school year, is that it's not different from what we've already been doing, but it uses a very straightforward terminology, and maintains a consistency that all staff can appreciate and follow with ease. In the past, when we had a lockdown situation, we would use terminology of external and internal lockdowns. That got confusing for people, because an external lockdown means basically securing your perimeter, and nobody's in or out, but business as usual inside. Internal lockdown was quite different, and that was everybody's lockdown, there's a serious incident in your school. So, what's great about this, is it very clearly differentiates between the two. In a critical incident, when the staff would hear a P.A. announcement that might be an external lockdown, they may just hear lockdown, and not necessarily know that it was external versus internal. In this arrangement, the terminology is very clear. It's no longer external to secure the perimeter, it's lockout. And that basically means all the doors are locked externally, but business is the same inside. Nothing changes inside. So, that may be a neighborhood disturbance, could be a dog on a playground, could be anything. Lockdown very clearly denotes that this is locks lives out of sight, and that means you are in your room, you're locked down, you're out of sight, until that door is unlocked for you. It's very specific. And then, the other aspects of that, we already do, of course, evacuate and shelter, but it also offered a really cool option for our principals and administrative staff, which was the hold feature, which allows a principal to call a hold, which means keep your students in their classrooms, because there's something that they're taking care of that they don't want people in the hallways for, that can easily roll into a lockdown in that situation, should it need to, because in those situations, the students and staffs are already in their locked classrooms, so business is just continuing as usual. So, when we rolled it out to the staff, they were very receptive to it, and they've been using it for the drills that we've been running. They're reporting back that it's going really well. We also, we gave, every classroom in the district received these posters to display, so the students knew exactly what the icons mean, and what the terminology means. Every staff member also received this card that they now wear on their lanyards. And, our first responders are also aware that we've adopted this system, and they're all for it. It's been a great rollout, honestly, and it's been really fantastic working with our first response team. We've always had fantastic relationships with our first responders, but, you know, rolling out the new year with the safety summit, having them be our special guests, and kicking off the year on school safety was a really great way to go. It's fostered all kinds of new ideas from our team with our partners, and we've got more trainings coming up in the fall, and again in the winter PD days, and the momentum has really picked up. We've got a lot of ideas with our safety teams, and it's just generated a lot of great discussion, and I think it's just really rolling.
Just add one thing. Amy and Denise have been fast at work writing, we found a couple safety grants, and there, our hope is to have these kits in every room very soon with the tourniquets and every, stop the bleed kits, I believe, Amy?
Yes, so, we applied for a $40,000 grant through the Bureau of Workers' Compensation, and essentially, they are, so tourniquets are very expensive. To supply the district with tourniquets, it's about $37,000. So, with this grant, it was very specific about what it was looking for in terms of trauma response in a school setting. And, bleeding control kits were the main ingredient to a grant request, which actually worked out great for us, because when we went through the safety summit and the relationships that we've been building with Metro Hospital and with the Aleria Fire Department, that's been one of their main, one of their main drives, is teaching people how to stop the bleed in a critical incident, whether you're in school, whether you're on the street, in a car accident, at the mall, whatever the case may be. If you know how to stop bleeding, you can save lives. In most situations, particularly when you're talking about school violence, should there be an active shooter situation, the majority of the people that, a lot of them could have been saved, had people known how to stop the bleed. And, Aleria Fire actually just kind of related to that. Aleria is really cool, because we have just, our teams here in Aleria have been certified now to go in with the police department in a critical response. That's not the case everywhere, and it hasn't been the case up until recently, but Aleria Fire now has a trauma response team that goes in with the police officers to start treating victims right away, as opposed to when they used to have to wait until the scene was secure, which was a lot of the case when people would bleed out. So, in these situations, bleeding control kits, while they sound scary, they're really about just citizen responsibility and knowing how to use them. So, one of the ways that we're gonna be using our safety teams going forward is very specific training with our first responders in how to use these kits, and how to be professionals in their own buildings in emergency response.
Good. That's outstanding.
Cool.
Questions?
Great job, Amy.
Okay, Super, thank you for the update, Amy. Very good job.
It's all about preparation.
Absolutely. Okay, moving along on the agenda, we do not have anyone signed up for today for comments, so there are no visitor comments. We'll move along to Board Member Discussion. First item, we'd like to say to our entire, I was informed that it is Custodian Appreciation Day today, so we'd like to thank all the custodians. They've done a wonderful job for us, and our schools are in tip-top shape, so obviously on the record, I'd like to thank all the custodians. And, also to Mr. Bax, I believe you have an update on some construction items for us today?
Yeah, yeah, we can do that now. I'll try to keep it brief. I think I got 10 pages here. No. Nice, I'm just kidding.
Okay, you got a minute, go.
No, but this is, what I wanna do is just give everybody a little bit of an update. Some of this, a lot of this came from our friend, Mr. Rigda, but like I say, it's gonna be shorter than that. Starting with the Northwood Campus. That campus is on schedule. The news is, has to do with the Windstream telephone pole that happens to be sitting in the middle of the entrance off of Abbey Road that we wanna put in, right? Well, that has been an issue, getting that moved, and it's not just moving it, there's a tremendous number of communications wires on those poles. That has been part of the issue. Windstream has determined that it can reposition its poles along Abbey Road, that side, which would be the east side, yeah, it would be the east side of our lot, of the Northwood Lot, the new Northwood Lot. And, they can remove completely the pole that's sitting in the designed center of that entranceway off of Abbey Road, and they can, in order to do this, they're going to be asking us for two easements. One being approximately 25 by 30 feet in the northeast corner of the lot. If you can picture where that is, that would be the lot, that would be the corner of the lot that's along Abbey Road toward the woods next to the ravine, right in that corner. And they're also asking for a 15-foot wide easement along the entire eastern border, along Abbey Road. That's currently where their poles are. They already have almost an easement established there, but they wanna confirm that. So, they're thinking that if they get these easements, that they could have the poles, they could have this project completed by the end of the year, which is really good. Our attorney, Mr. Lane, has prepared a resolution that we're going to see tonight for consideration. That will initiate this process, and at that point, then, the actual easement agreements will be prepared, and we'll look at those at some subsequent date.
Okay.
Okay? As far as Ely, it's ahead of schedule. Keep in mind that it has to be, because we're going to be tearing down a building in order to have a parking lot, so all that demolition and creation of that parking lot will have to be done during the summer break coming up, so that's something to be watching for. As far as Hamilton, Hamilton is behind about two to three weeks. The AGS Construction Manager informs us that they have amended their schedules, and they expect to be back on schedule by the 1st of December. So, that's good news.
And also in Hamilton, too, we don't have to tear down a building.
Right, we do not have to tear down anymore, any buildings there. Eastern Heights, on Eastern Heights, that construction has begun, as you're obviously, as you're aware of. Any of the interfering trees, trees that would be in the way of that circumferential road that is around that facility, those have been cleared. I understand that we will be planting a few after the construction's complete, but, yeah, people, I think, you know, we did have some concerns about trees coming down, but that's done, and so that makes room for that. The building site is in preparation at this time. The, it's going to be, Eastern Heights will be similar to the New Ely location, in that the Eastern Heights building, the complete Eastern Heights campus will be, that building will be completed before that, the old building is removed. And, so, at that point, during the summer of, between the 20 and the 21 school year, that's when that building will have to be taken down, and I'm assuming parking areas will be in there. The parking area that's in, that's currently, there's a parking area put in at Eastern Heights right now. That is a construction parking area for the workers and the people that are coming in and out of that construction site, rather than park them out on the streets and everywhere else where it's already tight anyway, that's where the construction people will be parking in the meantime, during the construction. And, let's see, finally, at the Westwood Campus, that building is currently in the design stage, in the design development, so that's, so we'll be seeing that at some point, we'll be seeing the completion of that. The news at that, in this area, is, has to do with the current sanitary sewer that serves this entire complex, Crestwood, Westwood, and this building. That line, the sewer line that serves this property, is a private, is a private sewer line that is connected to the sewer system of the city of Aleria, and that's done by way of a lift station that's somewhere on this property. And, basically what's going on is this lift station, this lift station is becoming a maintenance issue. As I understand it, it's been reported that we've already had five service calls on this lift station in the last year. So, the recommendation is to replace that line with a gravity flow line, eliminating the lift station, but that is an extensive piece of work, and the cost of that line is, has been estimated between $300,000 and $400,000 to get that done. So, that brings us to a proposal that has been forwarded by the Aleria Township, and what they are proposing is that the city of Aleria and the Aleria Township have what's called a joint economic development district, okay? And, what the township is proposing is that this development district install this line, okay? And, they would cover the cost. This joint development district would cover the cost of this line, of like an eight-inch gravity flow line, and basically what would happen is this, the school district would then connect to that. We would have to pay the connection costs from our buildings into that line, but it would be considerably less than $300,000 to do that. But, and we would also be able to use the co-funded, a blend of both district and state funding to do that. The big advantage is to us, is that it would eliminate the maintenance of that lift station, as far as the district is concerned, but it's also a big advantage to the township in that, assuming that Crestwood, the Crestwood Building becomes, and that area becomes available for development, then all of a sudden, that development becomes possible. And, so this is, this is why basically the township is proposing that, is because the future development, they see future development opportunities in that area, at least potentially, and the advantage for this district would be, with that potential development, would be additional taxes, property taxes, as well as possibly, probably some additional students. So, there will also be a resolution today that will initiate this formal approval process. Basically, what the board will be asked to do is make a request in the form of this resolution to the JED, to that Joint Economic Development District, make that request that will initiate this process. So, pretty good news, but I mean, so it's, so obviously, there's still a lot to be done in terms of, in terms of exactly how we would demolish and dispose of that property, where Crestwood sets to open that up for development, there's a variety of things that have to be done, that may not even be possible, but it absolutely has to have that sewer line to make that possible. So, that's cool, it's good news.
Great. Thanks, Mr. Bax. I appreciate the update, and let's say, the board is very excited about our partnership with the city. Everything that the city's doing for us with this JED agreement, it's gonna make our property much more marketable, and actually having the sewer lines in is outstanding, and this is something that the city is going out of their way to help us, and we appreciate everything the mayor and the city is doing for us here. It's great news. Other items, I did have a, as far as discussion item, we had talked a while about the different hiring, and I think we're at the point now that we are in the school year, that maybe Jamie and Anne, we can have some information about hiring statistics, you can do a presentation to the board, and I've talked with Anne about this a number of times, is I get questions about the school's hiring practice, if we're hiring within Aleria, so maybe the next meeting or two, if you could put something together, and just let us know where we're at compared to years gone by. Any other questions or items for the board today?
I did have one question for Jim. In regards to the fact that you said that Hamilton was maybe two or three weeks behind, and hopefully by December... and hopefully by December they would be caught up. Um, with December coming and, you know, the snowfall, are you assuming that by December they will be done with the exterior and working on the inside or how, how is that going to work?
Well, the plan, the plan is laid out, the plan is laid out for Hamilton to be doing interior work, probably from January, certainly January up through spring.
Okay.
Okay? Um, now, it's, it's possible, what they're, what they're saying is they have amended their schedule to be current, to the, to be on, back on track to the current schedule by December 1st. Okay? So they will, they will, it's not absolutely necessary looking at, I mean, now I'm talking off the top of my head now, but I'm not sure if, if all the exterior veneer has to be on, meaning the brown brick that you see going. I'm not sure if that has to be done by December 1st. Okay? Because, but it's, but we certainly want the building enclosed because of the interior work that will have to go on. So that's, I haven't seen, I, I'm not familiar with exactly with that schedule, but they plan on being current with the, they, with their current schedule, they plan on being back on track by December 1. That's the plan.
Thank you.
Good question. Any other, uh, items for the board discussion? Mr. Gabhart?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move along then, uh, start getting involved with business here. Uh, meeting minutes, the minutes from the September 18, 2019, uh, meeting have been posted. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
A motion by Board Member Gabhart. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Brubaker. Any questions or comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gabhart?
Aye.
Mr. Brubaker?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Karstarfin?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye, motion carries. Treasurer action items, Madam Treasurer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I only have donations this evening and we'd like to express appreciation to Love Incorporated of Lorraine County for a donation of the Clotha Kid program that was valued, that is valued at $8,370.
Wow.
BASF Corporation for a donation of $1,000 to the Science Olympiad. And Mr. Richard Brokop for a donation of $500 to Alaria Robotics.
Wow. Very nice. Super, do I have a, uh, motion to approve the treasurer action items?
So moved.
Motion by Board Member Karstarfin, do I have a second?
I'll second.
And a second by Board Member Bax. Any questions or comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Karstarfin?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Brubaker?
Aye.
Mr. Gabhart?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye, motion carries. Any other reports for us today, Madam Treasurer?
No, thank you.
Okay, great. Moving along, uh, superintendent action items, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Elick. First, I have to approve the automatic continuation of the embudsman contract. This is, uh, where we place several of our, um, alternative education students and that is all I have under action items.
Okay, do, do I have a motion to approve the superintendent action items?
So moved.
A motion by Board Member Brubaker, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Gabhart. Any questions or comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Brubaker?
Aye.
Mr. Gabhart?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Karstarfin?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye, motion carries. Madam Superintendent, uh, looks like there's no other report, so we'll move along to personnel action items this evening.
Okay, tonight I have first, the first of, uh, two revisions in job descriptions we did. Uh, the first one for social worker. We also have to approve the appointment of the following certified staff members, to approve the following game workers for the athletic services, uh, to approve the supplemental contracts. That says revised, we, it used to be split and the other person had to drop out for some reason, so we had to revise that. Also, um, to approve, this is the second, um, job description for the executive specialist benefits coordinator, Julie Parker's position. Um, we updated her, uh, job description also. And as you'll see, she is retiring after 30 years with the district and it's a big loss to the district. She's a wonderful employee. Um, also for the, to approve the unpaid leave of absence for the following classified staff member. Uh, we have the appointment, to approve the appointment for, uh, additional classified staff, um, getting hopefully some more substitutes in line. And, uh, that is it under, um, personnel items.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the person, the superintendent's personnel action items this evening?
Moved to approve.
I have a motion by Board Member Bax, do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by Board Member Gabhart. Any questions or comments? I do, go ahead.
I just want to know, are you now, uh, complete with the social workers?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. West is also a football coach. He actually came back to Alaria. Um, he's a graduate of Alaria West and he is going to be working at the high school. He has some experience in Olentangie schools, um, working with substance abuse. He's a licensed social worker. So now we are complete with that and this is out of that student wellness money.
That's what I was wondering.
Yes.
Okay.
Is the guy like eight foot tall?
Yes, he is.
I was looking for him at the Apple Festival, but I didn't see anyone.
Um, we're really excited about it. Uh, Mr. Brown and, uh, the two counselor, uh, department heads, we, we have some additional staff up there to help students with, um, especially students at risk and we really are excited about what we're going to be able to offer them and their families.
Okay, great. That's outstanding. Okay, any other questions or comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Gabhart?
Aye.
Mr. Brubaker?
Aye.
Ms. Karstarfin?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye, motion carries. Uh, Madam Superintendent, do you have a superintendent report for us tonight?
Very, very short one. Um, you did mention the, uh, National Custodians Day, we probably shouldn't forget, last week was National Food Service Workers' Day, so I don't want to shortchange them.
Absolutely.
Um, also, this weekend, Homecoming, uh, the parade's at 5:30, they're walking about a mile down, is it West or Middle? Middle Avenue, uh, a parade, kind of excited about that, haven't done that for a while and, um, that's at 5:30, meeting, Amy?
Gathering, uh, Seventh Street.
Seventh Street, okay. Game at seven against Medina, so we're excited, hopefully we'll bring home another win. Also, um, just real quick, the success of the first food pantry we talked about, but the next food pantry is Monday at Oakwood and that one will be a little bit different. It's pre, pre-boxed, um, food for that one. It's going to be a little different than the other one. At the high school, it'd always be kind of a grocery shop and pre-boxed at Oakwood because of the size and everything, we're going to go with just pre-boxed. So if you'd like to come help?
Have we communicated this with the residents or?
Yep.
Okay.
We, um, what, what was really successful with the first one, uh, well, of course we've been putting it on social media and sending it to the paper, but what really was successful is we sent a text message to all of our families, um, prior to the food pantry. And we had what Second Harvest said was the largest first turnout they've ever seen in one of our food pantries and sitting at the intake desk taking, um, information, I had, I don't know, at least a dozen people who commented that they were there because they got the text message.
Oh, good.
So, um, we know that worked, we're going to do that again. We also sent flyers home with every, um, child.
Good. Outstanding. Question? Through you to Amy, all right, and I talked to Mr. Brown about this in regards to the parade, I've been working with Lieutenant Frank and Ms. Blitz on that, but, um, are we putting something out that'll chronicle as a press release that this is going to go on? Cause this is going to be something that
Yes.
Quite frankly is, is larger than our Halloween parade, but not quite as large as the bicentennial parade, so.
Yes, yes, um, we definitely are and you're right, it does grow initially, it started with just a couple convertibles with the Homecoming Queens and now, uh, the invitation was extended to the rest of the district to participate. So we have, um, elementary schools, all three boroughs schools, um, having even a couple floats in the parade as well as the
Really?
So, yeah.
No roses.
Wow, that's, that's
It's exciting, I will say that.
I happened to see Jason Higgins yesterday and he wasn't sure whether he, where he's going to come up with all these convertibles that he needs.
We did put out a message to the district if anybody had
They don't, they don't make that, I think, I think, I think he said Camaro, Camaro's the only thing that comes in a convertible anymore.
Okay.
As far as Chevrolet.
Great, okay, super.
And just, just one more, I want to, uh, extend a big congratulations to our own Annie Karstarfin. We're going to be going and supporting her with her big award in recognition this Saturday at the, um, NAACP of Lorraine County's Freedom Fund banquet.
Alaria.
In Alaria, I'm sorry. Um, and, uh, we're looking forward to it, where several of us will be there, so.
Great, and we are very proud of our own Annie Karstarfin, that's for sure. Great.
It's all in the name, right, Annie?
It's all.
Super.
I thought you were going to have to say award-winning, uh, down there.
There you go. We, there's a lot of award-winning up there. Lot of award-winners and, uh, one senior member. Okay, moving along.
Whoa, 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 whoa. Don't forget Jim over there.
Okay, two senior members, okay. Moving along on the agenda here, uh, thank you, Madam Superintendent. Uh, Board of Education, we have a couple things. Uh, first is the JED, uh, that Board Member Bax talked about, so I'd like, uh, a motion to approve the resolution regarding a request for the Alaria Township and the city of Alaria to allow the Westwood campus to enter into the JED between the city of Alaria and the Alaria Township as detailed below, along with the list of Alaria School District parcels affected by the JED as detailed in enclosure P2. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Board Member Karstarfin and a second by Board Member Gabhart. Any questions or comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Karstarfin?
Aye.
Mr. Gabhart?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Brubaker?
Epstein?
And Mr. Elick?
Aye, motion carries. Okay, now we have another item on here about the, uh, memo of understanding, um, that Board Member Bax discussed. Um, so I'd like a motion to approve the resolution directing, uh, Board President to enter into two non-binding memorandums of understanding with Windsor Communications as detailed below. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Had a motion?
Windstream Communication, you said Windsor.
Oh, excuse me, Windstream Communication. Uh, do I have a motion for a Windstream Communication?
So moved, Mr. President.
All right, I have a motion by Board Member Brubaker, do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second by Board Member Karstarfin. Any questions or comments with a memo of understanding? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Brubaker?
Aye.
Ms. Karstarfin?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Gabhart?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye, motion carries. Uh, we do not have any executive session today and, um, I think we're, uh, done. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Moved and second. Uh, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gabhart?
Aye.
Mr. Brubaker?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Karstarfin?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye, motion carries and meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.